Okay, I will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, February 15th, 2021. I would ask that you rise for a brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight is the City Council meets in our regular session back together and on Skype. We want to give ever thanks for all the help and support and good kind deeds that have been done in this community in the last six months during the COVID pandemic. We are ever thankful for the many kind hearts and souls who have stood forth and made donations and service to others and helped assisted folks that are in need of it. And I think it speaks well to the heart of Batavia and what this town is truly all about. Tonight, we also want to remember those from our community who are serving in foreign soil, on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America. We just ask that a special blessing be showered upon them and all the men and women from our country who are serving with them. Tonight also, we ask for direction and vision and understanding and guidance as the City Council goes about the items on our agenda, knowing that in the hearts and minds of each and every one of them, we are here to do what we feel is in the best interest of our community. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman Miller, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes.
(inaudible) Into the Republic, which it stands: One Nation, Under God, In Visible Liberty and Justice For All.
Thank you. Okay, I'd ask the City Clerk to please call the roll.
Miller?
Here.
Rosato?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Knop?
Here.
Chanset?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Uer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
McFadden?
Here.
So how many do we have in?
Thirteen present, one absent.
We have thirteen present, one absent. So we have the necessary quorum to conduct business. I might note, for those who may be watching it on TV, we have three elected aldermen and the City Clerk and myself here, and the other ten aldermen are attending the meeting via Zoom. So we do have the necessary quorums, and everybody will be invited to participate in any way they want. Moving then, item number four, which is the reminder to ask everybody to please speak into the microphone, and if you're wearing a mask like I am, I ask that you, when you're speaking, if you'll pull it down so it's easier for people to understand what you're saying. We have received feedback from people that say that when somebody's trying to talk with a mask on, it's very hard watching it on TV to understand what's being said. Moving then to item number five, items to be removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda. Alderman Chanset, do you have anything?
Your Honor, I'm aware of none.
All right. One thing I would like to make mention of on items that are to be removed, added, or changed, or I could do this either under matters from the public, we are honored tonight to have the three members of the Batavia Fire and Police Commission have come here tonight to give us a little bit of an update as to what activities they're involved with. And so I will put them on the agenda then as item number seven, under matters from the public. And we didn't put them on the agenda just because we weren't sure, given the weather and everything else that was happening, whether or not they were going to want to bear the brunt of that and come out, but all three of them did, and so we thank you all for coming, and we'll have you on the agenda here in just a minute. Okay. I guess then, do you want to make a motion, Alderman Chanset, that we add that notation that the Fire and Police Commission will speak under matters from the public?
Under item 7A, so moved.
Yeah.
Second, now.
We have a motion by Alderman Chanset, second by Knop, for the adding item seven, the Fire and Police Commission to speak under matters from the public, and Clerk call the roll.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Motion's approved by a vote of thirteen yes, no-no's, one absence. Okay, moving then to item number six, which is the consent agenda. Alderman Chanset, would you present this, please?
Your Honor, the consent agenda reads as follows: To accept and place unfiled the Committee of the Whole Minutes from January 12th and January 26th, 2021; The Plan Commission Minutes from January 20th, 2021; Historic Preservation Commission Minutes from December 14th, 2020; Building Reports for January 2021. Approvals: The February 5th, 2021 payroll on the amount of $959,816.10. The Account's payable check registered in the amount of $1,643,352.90. The City Council Minutes for February 1st, 2021. Approval: The Committee of the Whole Executive Session Minutes for April 28th, 2020, and November 10th, 2020. Approval: City Council Executive Session Minutes for January 19th, 2021. Resolution 21-06-R: Purchase of a leaf machine from Bunnell Industries for an amount of Resolution 21-07-R: Authorizing execution of Task Order Number 25 with Engineering Enterprises for professional services, design engineering related to chlorine booster station on the southeast side of the city. Resolution 21-10-R: Authorizing a contract with Mead Incorporated to perform directional boring and conduit installation for new electrical service at 1801 Suncast Lane for an amount not to exceed $79,150, which includes a 10% contingency amount. Resolution 21-11-R: Authorizing a contract with Carlyle Utility Contractors, Inc., to perform cable installation for new electrical service at 1801 Suncast Lane for an amount not to exceed $23,874, which includes a 10% contingency amount. Resolution 21-12-R: Authorizing a contract with Carlyle Utility Contractors, Inc., to perform 35 KV cable replacement for new electrical service at 1801 Suncast Lane for an amount not to exceed $44,935, which includes a 10% contingency amount. Your Honor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second, now.
Moved by Alderman Chanset, second by Alderman Knop, for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Clerk call the roll, please.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved by a vote of thirteen yes, no-no's, one absence. Okay, moving to item number seven, which are matters from the public, and I am honored tonight to invite the members of whoa, Chairman Vance, are you coming, are you going to do the speaking, or?
I'll start in a minute.
We have Nancy Vance, Dennis Anderson, and Randy Zeiss here, and they comprise the members of our Batavia Board of Fire and Police Commissioners, who are kind of the civil service arm of the city, and they do all the hiring and firing and promotions within those two agencies, and they do a marvelous job, in my opinion. And so, for somebody that works all these hours for no pay, I think it's a classic example of volunteer citizenship, but it's outstanding, great, and I thank, personally thank you and publicly thank you for the great job you're doing, because if you look at the quality of the people that we have in both departments today, we got a great place here, thanks to your efforts.
Thank you. I didn't know you were here. Did you guys feel welcome? We're probably at this here. Hello. We're here tonight, really, to share our deep appreciation for all that our first responders do, paramedics, firefighters, police officers, that put their lives and their safety on the line for the citizens of Batavia 24 hours a day, seven days a week. As commissioners, we get to hear about our unsung heroes through letters of commendation and who tell us that they're just doing their job, that they do this because they love their work. In reality, they show up for us in the hardest times we face. I also wanted to thank the leadership teams, both under Chief Huel and Chief Dyke. They have phenomenal leadership teams that make us sleep easier at night because of the work that they do and the quality of candidates that we get to hire, and it's just, it's a privilege to be part of this. But I really like the guys that have lived in those shoes and worked those jobs. Chief Denny Anderson did 36 years? 36 years on the job, and God love us, we got him to join us for the commission as well. And Chief Randy Zeiss, who also served 35 years on the Fire Department, and they're just really quality people that I'm privileged to work with in this effort. So when you see a police officer or a firefighter or paramedic, give them a wave, say thank you, let them know that we appreciate all the work that they do to keep us safe, and that's why we're able to sleep well at night. So Chief Anderson?
Good evening, Mayor, and aldermen, wherever you may be. I used to be kind of a regular visitor here, and it's been a long time, so it's good to see you. I'm not a good extemporaneous speaker, so I took the liberty of making some notes, and I'm mostly going to sing the praises of the Police Department, because that's where I came from, and Chief Zeiss will do the other side when he comes up to speak. I retired from the Batavia Police Department in 2005. I then spent 12 years with IDOT, Division of Traffic Safety, as a manager of traffic safety grants. And during that 12 years, I spent a lot of time visiting local police departments in Cook County and the suburbs, getting to know them. I spent a great deal of time working with them and their traffic safety programs, and became well acquainted with administrators and supervisors and patrol officers in order for me to be able to summarize their work in my job. And I'm telling you this little bit of history to point out that I have had a unique opportunity to observe the traits and characteristics of a variety of police departments and their employees for more than a decade. When we're invited, when we were invited to address the City Council tonight, I thought, wow, what a great opportunity to tell you with pride that, based on my experience, I placed the Batavia Police Department at the top rung of the ladder. The ethical conduct, exceptional character, dedication to duty, and loyalty to their community demonstrated every day by Batavia officers is exemplary. Now, I don't want you to think that I'm forgetting the other parts of the public safety spectrum. I have the greatest respect and admiration for the firefighters and medics and for ESDA personnel who serve our citizens in the performance of their difficult and dangerous jobs. Because of his background, retired Battalion Chief Randy Zeiss can do a better job of addressing his former department. But to all public safety personnel everywhere, God bless you and stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. I am Randy Zeiss, and I'm one of the three commissioners. I kind of wasn't prepared to talk about my history, but since I got nominated to, I would like to say that after my 35 years with the Fire Department, I, like Denny, believe that we do have the, one of the greatest fire departments in the area. I was fortunate enough to work with a lot of other cities on different types of alarms and calls and situations. I did training in other states and viewed a lot of other fire departments, and I can honestly say that our department is top-notch, one of the best. Our turnover rate is zero, just like the Police Department, actually. We do have retirements, or if someone gets injured, that's about it. So we do have a bunch of great people. For the most part, we wanted to just take a minute and thank our City Fire and Police Department personnel. We wanted to thank them for everything that they do to protect us and keep us safe. Thank us, or thank you for going that extra mile in these crazy and unprecedented times, and thank you for giving us some sense of peace, knowing that you are continuing to work and do what you do best, and that's helping us. You are truly our heroes. We pray that you all remain healthy, safe, comforted, and appreciated, and you have our extreme gratitude and thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. I just would like to publicly again thank all three of you for your service to us. As I say, what we have there was what you largely put together and helped to create with the aides, the assistance of the chiefs of administration in both the Fire and Police Departments. I think we've got some kind of aces in the hole here, because in addition to retired chiefs of the Fire and Police Department, we also have Nancy Vance, who served, I believe it was eight years on the City Council, representing the 7th Ward. So she comes with a wealth of understanding and information as to how the system works and how it got to where it is today, and all the good things that are done there. So we've really got, I think, an all-inclusive team here, and as I look back on some of the things that have happened here in Batavia, I am just, I, some of my, you know, when you get into things like the police issue, there's some of it's kind of confidential and not secretive, but we just can't talk about it. And get on the fire side, and then you run into real quick the HIPAA thing, Health Information Personal Privacy Act, so we can't talk about that. So there's a lot of things that those two departments involve themselves in that they do that is just phenomenal. And I got to tell you, maybe someday I can tell the story, but both departments have had situations in the last few years that really have required some in-depth, very careful, considerate study and actions on the parts of their administrations to prevent things of a very serious nature from happening in our town. And I just can't say enough the great work that we are benefactors of in Batavia. So the Chief Zeiss and the Chief Anderson, and to former Alderman Vance, who was also, I might mention, ran the Living Well Cancer Treatment Facility and basically kind of got that thing started and up on the ground. We've got three winners here, and I hope you guys are prepared to stay around for a few years, because we'd like to keep you. So thank you for the great job you're doing, and the proof is in the pudding, and what we got on the streets and in the firehouses and at the calls of emergency in Batavia today is the true proof of the great job that you've done. So thank you again. Okay, moving then to item eight, which is the Main Street Report, and Beth Walker, our executive director, aren't you here? I saw you someplace on the screen.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, can you hear?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes. I'm going to thank you for having me, and I would like to kind of wrap up for the Love of Local Weekend that we just concluded. I don't know if any of you had an opportunity to come and see some of the ice sculptures done by Joe Gagapan down at Pegbon Center. That was really fun. We are going into restaurant madness. We have really great participation this year. We have 35 restaurants, so we're really excited about that. And we have selected the 10 boardwalk shops for the 2021 season. Watch our social media. If you have been watching that, there was a little preview, and those will be announced this week. Does anybody have any questions?
Beth?
Yes.
I know you had 25 applicants for the 10 positions that you got, you know, to fill the boardwalk shops. Have any of the other ones expressed any interest, or are they, you know, possibly talking about doing something similar to what the Wilson Street Mercantile did, or they could get together and rent a space to work out of? I mean, I just think this is so exciting to have that many businesses wanting to locate here, that any way that we could facilitate that happening, I think, would be a good thing.
Well, we are working with the people that weren't selected for various reasons. There might have been a variety of reasons that they weren't selected, but we are talking with them about various spaces in downtown that they could go into.
Good. I think that's a good thing, you know, to try to find any opportunity we can to get as many of these businesses to locate here, because I think then that just gives us more variety of things that we have to offer downtown to keep people and draw people into downtown.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Beth? Beth, I just wanted to offer up, I had the opportunity to be down at City Hall for both parts of the day, on Saturday and Sunday, and unfortunately, I had a conflict, and I couldn't make it when you did the ribbon cutting or the opening of the ice sculptures. But I was amazed, every time I came out the door, I had somebody there in a car or whatever asking me questions about them, and how these were all put together and what wondrous expressions of art they really were. And so I take my hat off to all those of you in the Main Street program who brought this new attraction to our town, and I don't know how many times I saw people over the most recent Valentine weekend coming down and parking their car on Houston Street, and then getting out of the car and going and sitting in the, what do we call that, the art bench?
Snow plane.
The what?
No throne.
No, okay. And they would then have somebody there to take their picture. So I got to believe that's going to be on some Christmas cards or wedding invitations or something, so I think it speaks well about the imagination and the creativity that Batavia Main Street is putting on the street these days, because I had one guy tell me that he had driven out here from Wheaton, because he had heard about it, and he brought his girlfriend, and they were just so enamored with it, that he, at the end, he says to me, well, I think we're going to get married, my future fiancee and I may think about moving into this town. We like what we see here. So you're selling it in a lot of different respects, but I think that was a neat idea, and I have a feeling that once people start hearing more about it, there's going to be a whole bunch of, well, want to rush down and see it, maybe after the sun has raised and the sculptures have started to meld away, it's not going to be as easy enough a thing to see and appreciate. But right now, they're in pretty dynamic appearance down there. So they're both at the Pegbon Center and out here along the Houston Street Corridor. Do we have any other places that they are? Is that where they mostly are?
No, they're both there, and we are looking to expand for 2022, so.
Okay. Well, I think you got on the right road, Dan, with what you did this year, because there's a lot of people that are praising your artistic skills of those who put those together, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anything else for Main Street tonight? Beth, you got anything else you wanted to offer?
Nope.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right, moving then to item number nine, which is Resolution 21-009-R, Amendment to the Grant Agreement between the City of Batavia and the Batavia Main Street for Development of the Boardwalk Shop Project. Who's got this one? Alderman Chanset?
As we had discussed in committee, and as we just heard during the Main Street Minute Report, a highly successful program, we have a request for two additional shops, as well as a picnic area. We discussed this in committee. The funding is certainly available. We're taking it from state grant money the city has already received, and as we discussed in committee, we've already approved this, and this formalizes the agreement to add the additional shops and picnic space. Laura, is there anything else that I left out?
No, you covered it all.
Uh, there's no additional remarks, I guess I would make a motion that we approve the amendment to the grant agreement between the City of Batavia and Batavia Main Street for the development of the Boardwalk Shops Project.
Second. Moved by Alderman Chansett, Second Alderman Miller for the approval of Resolution 21-009-R for the agreement between the City and Batavia Main Street for the development of the Boardwalk Shop Project addition. Any further discussion?
Sorry, briefly, during committee, we did discuss some work on the utility box. Were we able to make any motion on that or we're still discussing that?
I'm sorry, I wasn't aware of that issue.
Okay.
Yeah, I think some people would like to paint the boxes.
Yeah, just looking to beautify the area.
Over there at Ripley Wilson and River.
And we were deferring to staff for additional.
Your Honor.
Yes.
That'll be for a separate discussion, not tied to this.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion then on the resolution? Kirk, call the roll.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serrone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Resolution 21-009-R is approved by a vote of thirteen yes, no-nos, one absent. Okay, moving to ten, which is Ordinance 21-09, revising Title III of the Batavia Municipal Code, rating an accommodation facility liquor license and amendment of the C2 carry-in liquor license. Who's got this one? Alderman Chansett.
Uh, Your Honor, as we discussed in committee, this amendment establishes the new Class L Accommodation Facility Liquor License Classification. It authorizes liquor sales and service for licensed senior living facilities, hotels, motels, and bed and breakfasts. The revision also amends the C2 carry-in liquor license, which broadens the number of businesses that are eligible for that carry-in license in our downtown mixed-use zoning district. It allows for retail stores as well as consumer personal service businesses to obtain the C2 carry-in liquor license. The current code does restrict that carry-in to salons and similar businesses in the mixed-use zoning district. This came out of committee with a ten-to-zero recommendation, so I would move that we approve Ordinance 20- I'm sorry, Ordinance 21-9, revising Title III of the Batavia Municipal Code, creating an accommodation facility liquor license and amendment to the C2 carry-in liquor licenses.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Serrone. Okay, we have a motion and second for the approval of Ordinance 21-009, revising Title III of the Batavia Code, creating an accommodation facility liquor license and amendment to the C2 carry-in liquor. Pause, any further discussion on that? Kirk, call the roll.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serrone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Beck is definitely.
She's absent.
Thank you. Knop?
Aye.
So that's twelve yes, two absent.
One absent and one abstention.
Two absent.
Technically, she's absent, yes.
She's off meeting, yeah.
Or ordinance is approved. Okay, moving to eleven, which is Ordinance 21-14, approving the plan of vacation for the Trillium Court turnaround. Who's got this one?
I do, Your Honor.
Alderman Chansett, Callahan?
Thank you. Yes, this is for approval of Ordinance 21-14, vacation of the Trillium Court turnaround right away as part of the ongoing city efforts to clear up issues with community development. This was a former Hammerhead turnaround road and it has since become a through street. We are vacating the two parcels of property at the adjacent Hammerhead at 1204 and 1211 Trillium Court. This would remove our liability for these locations. The cost is about $800 and I believe that is all. So with that, I move we approve Ordinance 21-14, vacation of Trillium Court turnaround right away.
Second.
Okay, was that Serrone that seconded that?
Yeah.
Or not, okay. Moved, Ordinance 21-14 is moved by Callahan, seconded by Serrone for the approval. Any further discussion?
Your Honor, just need to point out that this needs a three-fourths vote.
Right. And that's for the vacation of the Trillium Court turnaround. So any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serrone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Motion is approved by a vote of thirteen yes, no-nos, one absent. Okay, moving to item twelve, which is Ordinance 21-12, amending the text of the zoning code for cannabis business establishments in the city of Batavia. Who's got this one?
I do, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Thank you. As stated, this is Ordinance 21-12, amending the text of the zoning code for cannabis business establishments in the city. This is in a long process of the state allowed cannabis recreational dispensaries to be allowed in the state. As a result of that, we have had a public referendum this past fall, which passed by about a two-thirds majority. The turnout for that was at about eighty-one percent, so that was very high and gave good direction. We had planning and zoning review this, we've reviewed it at our committee of the whole, and the items that came out of the recommendations from the committee were we would allow recreational cannabis dispensaries in the LI-GI districts as conditional uses without the requirement that there be another cannabis business on the property such as a craft grower, infuser processor, or cultivation center. Two, we would remove the limitation on the number of dispensaries. There is a fifteen-hundred-foot separation that already exists in state law between recreational dispensaries. Number three, we changed the separation from specific uses to five hundred feet and removed recreational centers or facilities and game arcades due to the ambiguity and staff, based on that same ambiguity, also removed playground. I think that was a great job by staff to anticipate some of the ambiguity that we did not catch at Committee of the Whole. Number four was remove the prohibition for drive-through and walk-up business. This is, we're not removing it because it's already banned per the state. Number five, we intended to follow the state laws for hours of operation, which is between 6:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. And finally, we removed the requirement that would require applicants to have licensing for one year within the, prior to opening within the city limits. And I believe those were all of the changes and recommendations that we made out of Committee of the Whole. So I will recommend approval of Ordinance 21-12, amending the text of the zoning code, cannabis business establishment, City of Batavia applicant.
Second, Wolf.
Okay, we have a motion and second for the approval of Ordinance 21-12, amending the text of the zoning code for cannabis business establishments in the City of Batavia. Any further discussion?
Your Honor, just real quick, there was an updated map for, for I'm sure everybody on council reviewed, that was there and for the general public to look at the new buffer zones and where the locations would be able to be positioned if the state ever allowed a licensure for a business to operate here.
Thank you, very good point. Any other questions, comments? Not then, I guess, Kirk, to call the roll, and ordinance 21-12.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serrone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Ordinance 21-12 is approved by a vote of thirteen yes, no-nos, one absent. Moving to thirteen, which is Ordinance 21-13, authorizing the sale of excess former railroad parcels by solicitation of bids on South Bernadette Lane and North Millview Drive. Who's got this one? Alderman Chansett?
Your Honor, thank you. During committee, we discussed that the city has acquired or had acquired some parts of the Burlington Northern Right of Way back in the 1980s. It had been, portions of it abandoned back in the 1970s. The city is looking to sell five parcels of this former right of way. They're all landlocked and other than utilities, the city does not have any use for them. We did previously try to sell them back in 2014 and again in 2020, but the sales did not go forward because the owners had no interest in the properties. As we did earlier this past year, Georgetown had a landlocked pond the city owned that we had no use for, that we sold to them for $10, so we're hoping that the adjacent landowners would like to pick up some property on the cheap. I would move that we approve Ordinance 21-13, authorizing the sale of the excess former railroad parcels by solicitation of bids.
Second, Serrone.
Wolf?
Moved by Alderman Chansett, Second Alderman Wolf for the approval of Resolution 21-0, or, no, Ordinance 21-13, authorizing the sale of excess former railroad parcels by solicitation of bids for South Bernadette Lane and North Millview Drive. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serrone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Ordinance 21-13 is approved by a vote of thirteen yes, no-nos, one absent. Moving to fourteen, which is Resolution 21-008-R, authorizing award of a contract to Whittaker Construction and Excavating related to the Water Treatment Plants One and Two Rehabilitation Projects. Alderman O'Brien, do you have this one?
Yes, I do, Your Honor. The city's two water treatment plants, they require some extensive work. Their equipment is gonna need to be replaced, some updated and some rehabilitated. The scope of work will include rehabilitation of three deep wells, six high-service pumps, filtration updating and improvements. The backwash lagoon and brine tank disinfectant pumping equipment are also in need of alterations to address present and future regulatory compliance concerns. We had four people, four companies bid it. Whittaker Construction and Excavating Inc. was the low bid. They came in about 1% under the engineer's estimate. The, this is a budgeted project. We had a positive recommendation from engineering enterprises, the engineers have record, so I would make a recommendation to approve authorizing execution of agreement to award to Whittaker Construction and Excavating regarding the water treatment plants number one and number two rehabilitation project.
Second, Knop?
Moved by Alderman O'Brien, Second Alderman Knop for the approval of Resolution 21-008-R, authorizing the award of contract to Whittaker Construction and Excavating related to the Water Treatment Plants Number One and Rehabilitation Project Number Two. Any discussion?
Uh, Your Honor, I just wanted to put in there also that this was a not-too-exceed amount, a $4,425,000, which includes a .3% contingency and that this work is scheduled for 2021 and to finish up in 2022.
Very good. Any other comments or discussion? Kirk, call the roll, please, then.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serrone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Resolution 21-008-R is approved by a vote of thirteen yes, no-nos, one absent. All right, moving to fifteen, Administrator's Report.
Thank you. Just have a few items this evening. Wanted to let everyone know that I attended the last meeting of the Bicycle Commission and they are interested in coming to the Committee of the Whole meeting on March 9th to provide counsel with an update of what activities that they're working on this year and also to discuss with all of you the various items on the city's strategic action plan that relate to bicycling this year and how they would like to collaborate with the city in making sure that those items are accomplished. Also, wanted to let you know that this past Wednesday, the mayor recorded a public service message about the availability of vaccinations in King County. And participating with him in that discussion were Michael Isaacson, who's the Assistant Director of Community Health for King County Health Department, Corinne Pirog, King County Board Chair, and also Dave Brown, former alderman and new King County Board Member. That video is ready for publication tomorrow and so you'll see it on our website, on our social media, and our Friday e-news, but we'll also be sharing that with our various partner organizations for them to share to our community as well. We know people are very anxious to know what the status is about availability of the vaccines in the community. As Beth mentioned, Restaurant Madness is coming up here in March. It's actually gonna be for two weeks this time. One of the things we did as a committee, this is a collaborative thing that happens between the city, Main Street, and our Chamber of Commerce, and this year we also added to the committee two people who were from our local restaurant community because we wanted to make sure that in these COVID times with the strain that has been placed on all of our restaurants, that we fashioned this in a way that would be good for them. And so it's gonna be Sundays through Thursdays, the weeks of March 15th and March 22nd, and guests can either dine in or carry out and receive 10% off their order when they do that, but they'll also receive a coupon for 10% off for a dine-in or carry-out in April. And so they can get a discount twice with this new program. And every household in the City of Batavia is going to be receiving a mailer, and that is the coupon for this program, that you can bring to thirty-five different participating restaurants. And then you can also, there's a website, the city has a website, if you wanted to print out additional coupons, you can do that there. Finance has been extremely busy. You're hearing about one of our capital projects tonight for the water department and, of course, you know that we have been talking about the fact that we have applied for an IEP-A loan to assist us with that project. There's a tremendous amount of paperwork that goes along with that, but also Peggy has been working on the final draw requests for the IEP-A, the two loans for water and storm sanitary sewer for, that we had for Area Three as well. And then also, finance has prepared five abatement resolutions totaling $3.3 million and 1.1 million is abated from the general fund revenue and the remainder are from utility revenues. And what these abatement resolutions refer to is that the city has been able to recoup enough revenue to make the payments on those debts such that we don't have to levy that amount from property taxes. So that's a good situation to be in. Also, the state of Illinois has a bill under consideration right now that would allow the use of TIF funds for grants to businesses affected by COVID, and so we will be keeping tabs on that to determine if that indeed does get passed, and if it does, we'll certainly bring it to city council to determine if there is anything that you would like to do with existing TIF funds to assist our businesses. In community and economic development, we've received the new permit from Menards for various building renovations in addition to the prior proposals that they had provided to us for additions to their property. Out on Hawks Drive, behind the Walmart, the Windmill Landing Development is nearing completion and occupancy inspections are now underway, and we expect that we're going to see people moving in sometime in March, once the state has issued their operational license. The Historic Preservation Commission had their meeting on February 8th and they reviewed and approved two certificate of appropriateness requests for signs. And then in addition, they had the opportunity to have the discussion about the landmarking application, and there was concurrence that there were improvements that could be made to the current process based on discussions between the commission and then also, I believe, Alderman Knop attended that meeting as well. The first of which is to revise the application, to make the form more standardized and instructional to applicants so they understand the process, and then second, make clear in the code the required, middle requirements and timing of acceptance of the application, since that was something that was at issue in that last landmark application. And the third proposal was to make landmarking a two-thirds majority of the city council in the event that the landowner is objecting to the landmarking application. And there, the Plan Commission said that seems to be a matter that would be more appropriate for city council to decide that. So staff is gonna be working on the application form and making the other changes, and ultimately we will bring that approval back to the city council. In information systems, I wanted to alert you that our GIS specialist, Mike Kamen, has received his second GIS certification for Geographic Information Systems Professional, which is endorsed by the third-party GISCI through, and it's a peer-reviewed evaluation, and so congratulations to Mike for putting in the hard work through his education professional experience in being considered for the certification. Mike was also elected to the Illinois GIS Association Board of Directors for a two-year term, and that gets appointed by the Illinois GISA Membership Chair. We also had a meeting, I don't know if any of you noticed, a news story that a utility, a water utility in Florida had their SCADA system infiltrated by hackers, and it was using a remote access software system that had known deficiencies and weaknesses for hacking, and both our information systems department and our water utility had a very, you know, serious meeting to discuss what situations led to the breach that happened in that case, and I wanted to assure you and to assure the public that a similar situation could not occur here because we don't have remote access to our SCADA system here in the City of Batavia, and frankly, that's part of the reasons why we don't is because of the possibility of hacking into that system. That is my Administrator's Report this evening, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Any questions, Alora?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Alderman Serrone?
Yeah, can you give us an update? Do you have any idea where we stand budget-wise between salt and snow removal?
Um, yeah, thank you for bringing that up because it seems like we've had a tremendous demand for our salt this year, as well as overtime from the Streets Department for snow plowing. So we track all of it, but I do not have that figure for you right now, but certainly we will be providing that update in the coming weeks.
Okay, thanks.
Sure thing.
Anybody else have any questions, Alora?
If I could just make one last remark, I would like to just give a shout out to all of the of the city employees whose jobs require them to work out of doors in these conditions. And it's, it's one thing for us to have a few days of the, the polar vortex and temperatures and wind chills far below zero, but when it is a sustained situation and goes on for weeks, my heart really goes out to our Fire Department, Police Department, our Public Works employees, our Code Enforcement individuals, our inspectors whose job requires them to be out in the elements, and I just want to say a special thanks for their work during these, these hard times.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, moving then to Committee Reports, Administrative Services, Alderman Callahan, or Chansett, excuse me.
No report, Your Honor.
Community Development, Alderman Callahan.
Nothing to report.
City Services, Alderman Wolf.
Um, no report tonight, Your Honor, just a reminder to everybody, as the snow keeps piling up, to keep digging the fire hydrants out.
Great point.
That's an important one.
Okay, Public Utilities, Alderman O'Brien.
Your Honor, we're going to have a discussion tomorrow night regarding city electric and water utilities.
Okay. Do we have any other business?
Your Honor.
Alderman Callahan.
Just have a quick question regarding the declarations for the emergencies. I, as we move to four, I was wondering when the state might repeal some of the declarations. And then also, I was just wondering, as a result of that, the declaration that was originally made regarding the civil unrest, is that still out there? Do we need to formally repeal that, or did that just go away?
What we had decided was that it would be in place for so long as the governor continues to renew the state of emergency for the state of Illinois, and thus far, he has continued to renew that, and there is still a state of emergency declared at the state level.
Right, and that's where, for the, it made sense for the, for, as it related to COVID, but the state of emergency regarding the civil unrest, that has long passed.
Did we have a separate declaration for the civil unrest?
Yes. There were two separate ones.
I'll, I'll look into that. I remember that we, and we issued a curfew.
Right.
But I'm not sure that, that it was under a separate declaration, but I'll be, I'll be glad to look into that.
Thank you.
Anybody else on other, other business? Well, eighteen, the mayor's report, number one, I just want to jump on the bandwagon here in what's already been said by Alderman Saron and our city administrator, and commend all those people in our Public Works Department who really have risen to the occasion here night after night, day after day, time after time, middle of the night, holidays, everything. This has been a real year for trying to keep the streets clear and clean, and I get probably more compliments about that in the last month and a half than any other thing that's going on. People seem to be very impressed and pleased with the quality of effort being put forth by the Batavia Public Works in that arena. So I just want to publicly go on record as thanking each and every one of them. And the other thing I wanted to share with you is, is that I, this afternoon, I received an email from Joanne Zilman, who's the Deputy Director at the Batavia Public Library, who has been working very closely with our city staff under the census, as to, you know, we went through the process and everybody got, had to report their, where they lived and how many people were in the house and the whole bit. And so they have, she just wanted to forward to us a notice that Batavia received today, and I just want to read you a portion of it. It says, "The U.S. Census Bureau announced today that it will deliver the Public Law ninety-four-one-seventy-one redistricting data to all states by September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. COVID-related nineteen-related delays and prioritizations for the delivery of the apportements resulted in a delay of the U.S. Census Bureau's original plan to deliver the redistricting data to the states by March thirty-first of twenty-twenty-one." So we're moving up the date, when I guess we get the number of how many people live in Batavia, we were supposed to get it on March thirty-first, and now we are being told that they're going to deliver it to us on September thirtieth. So that's, that's quite a delay. The difference from the previous census, previous census, the Census Bureau will, different from the previous census, is the Census Bureau will deliver the data for all states at once instead of on an on-flow basis. This change has been made because of the COVID-nineteen-related shifts in data collection and in the data processing schedule, and it enables the Census Bureau to deliver a complete and accurate redistricting data for areas impacted in a more timely fashion for overall states all at once. So in other words, all fifty states are going to get their census data, and all towns are going to get it. And I'm very interested to hear what our new number for Batavia is, because there is a number of resources as far as revenues that we get, specifically our share of the state income tax is a big one, and there are other things that come into play under the city census. So this is an important number, not only for Batavia, but for every other city, but I just thought I would share with the city council that we were notified as of today that the date has been pushed back from March thirty-first to September thirtieth. So it's going to be a while yet. So I guess that's almost another, almost another six months that they're going to delay the census then. In the case of Batavia, you know, we are told that we have to redistrict all seven of our wards, so we have the equal, as near as we can get it, same number of people living in each ward. And I think there will be some minor adjustments, but I'm not thinking that we're going to have a big problem with this. We've, in the past, have received a very strong effort of support from the Kane County Clerk's Office, and they also get this data, and they give kind of a second look and a second viewpoint to it, so nobody can say, well, somebody's trying to redistrict this alderman out of town, or take him out of office, or whatever. And quite frankly, I've never, ever remembered that being the case in Batavia, certainly during my time as mayor. I think there was one previous time when the fifth ward and the second ward were being the number, and, and we had an alderman, his name was Walter Coth, as some of you may remember. He lived right on First Street, right near the fifth ward border. And so he agreed to stay in his house and let the line be moved, so he was moved from the second ward to the fifth ward. And just as things worked out, there was then a vacancy for fifth ward alderman in the next election, so he stayed on the city council for another couple of terms and was very highly thought of alderman. But that's the only time I can think of a time when we've, we've had to adjust, and in that one, we just moved an alderman from, from the second ward to the fifth ward, from the fifth ward to the, oh, the second ward to the fifth ward. So that's what we did on that one. So I don't think this is a big deal, but I know several of you have asked me, have we gotten any word yet of what the new population number is going to be from Batavia? And so I was just told today that we aren't going to know that till September thirtieth of this year. So that's the end of my report for tonight. Alderman Chansett, I entertain a motion for adjournment.
Your turn.
Have a second?
Second, Baron.
Second, Alderman Barons, Kirk, take a voice vote.
I'll in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting stands adjourned.